Good evening, I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council. It is Monday, November eighteenth, twenty nineteen, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Herrera.
Here.
Counselor Parsons.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Counsel President Freeman.
Here.
Counsel Reed.
She will be with us shortly, she's excused.
Counsel Kohler.
Here.
And Youth Counsel Wolfer.
Thank you, would you all rise if you are able and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much, we have two items under Special Orders of Business, and it is my pleasure to welcome the still-new, still this year, Chief of Marion County Fire District, Kyle McMahon. And welcome Chief, we're glad to have you with us. He was invited here tonight, Marion County is one of the two fire districts that serves the people of the city of Kaiser, and it's an opportunity for those who haven't had a chance to meet the Chief and to hear what the direction Marion County Fire District is going. Welcome Chief.
Thank you, thank you for your time, pleasure to be here. My name is Kyle McMahon, I'm the Fire Chief of Marion County Fire District Number One, have been since January first, been with the district since two thousand and one, been in the fire service since nineteen ninety-three. So my whole career has paid, has been at Marion County with me. Tonight, you have my Deputy Chief Ron Lee, and then Board President Mike Walter as well, for his support. So, we're out talking with the community, re-engaging with the communities that we serve. We serve a large area up here north of Kaiser, all the way over to the Four Corners, Brooks, Pratum, all the way to Highway twenty-two, and all the ins and outs of all the city limits and all of that. So, have a short little PowerPoint, happy to answer questions as we go through it, or at the end, whatever the pleasure is. So, hopefully everybody can hear me okay. Fire District One, we are a special district, so we receive no funding from the county itself, we're a separate taxing authority. We've been in the community since nineteen thirty-nine as one agency or another. We started as Four Corners, Brooks Rural Fire District. They kind of all came together, and then in nineteen sixty-eight, Ted Miller, who also started Sparky the Fire Dog, created Marion County Fire District Number One. We have over a hundred full-time, part-time, and volunteer personnel serving our community. We respond to about seventy-six hundred calls every year. And we are on track, if we continue to have busy months the rest of the year, on track for eight thousand calls, about twenty-two or twenty-three times a day we're called for service. We provide firefighting, fire suppression, emergency medical services, ambulance transport, ALS, BLS. Occasionally, we'll do inter-facility transfers out of Silverton or Woodburn, sometimes over here in Kaiser as well. We do have a Fire Marshal that does inspections, plans, reviews, hazmat, and then as we can, we do public safety and fire prevention, something the Fire District is always prided itself on, is getting into our schools and a number of events throughout the community. And we have multiple holiday events coming up here shortly, I believe it's with the Kaiser Chamber, candy cane runs, food drives, all that. Our service area here, the red dots are our fire stations. We have eight fire stations located throughout our eighty square miles. About fifty thousand people, Four Corners, Middle Grove, Pratum, McClay, Brook Lake, Clear Lake, Labish, and then Shametada area. Quite a large area, which is a unique challenge for us because we're spread out so far, but we have density up in the Clear Lake area, which is the north end of Kaiser, the Kaiser City limits here, and then that Shametada, Hayesville, and Four Corners areas there. And then we have this large rural farmland that doesn't generate a lot of calls, but it takes us a while to get out there. Kind of get a little bit of everything. A little bit about our Clear Lake station, which is up at Clear Lake and Wheatland Road, which serves the north end of the city of Kaiser, was part of the Brooks Rural Fire Protection District created nineteen forty-one. At that time, it had a little, small little district, about forty-seven square miles. It had a station in Clear Lake, Brooks, and Labish Center. Then, like I said, nineteen sixty-eight, Brooks and Four Corners Rural Fire Protection merged into the Fire District One. So, generally speaking, north of Park Meadow is kind of the dividing line between Marion County Fire District Number One and Kaiser Fire, and then it kind of comes by the Volcano Stadium and zigzags all over. For two thousand and eighteen, that Clear Lake station, which has an engine that's staffed during, by career and volunteer personnel during the week, seven to four, Monday through Friday. The ambulance is in service twenty-four hours a day. Then we also have a water tender that responds to rural areas where we don't have hydrants. So, six hundred and ten calls just in the Clear Lake area, which is kind of defined by River Road, east or west, I guess. And then it also backs up the Brooks Station, which we consider kind of the north end of Kaiser. People will come down in here. So, out of that station, it supports about a thousand calls a year. Pretty busy for volunteer stations, yeah.
Are most of those medic calls?
Yeah, about eighty-five percent of our calls are medical in nature. Like I said, we are independent of the county, we're good stewards of the tax dollars, we all operate under balanced budget, since we're a public agency. Long history of passing its financial audit, last week we had a press release, we did pass our audit with no findings again. For many, many years in the past, we have not had any findings and continue to do good things for our taxpayers and be responsible. Two years ago, we improved our ISO Insurance Services Office rating from an eight down to a four B for our entire district, which is pretty impressive, all the way out to kind of the northeast and northwest portions of our district. They're still within five miles of a fire station, but we did save several businesses, fire insurance costs because of that rating change. That's our commitment by our aid stations, our personnel that we have, and the apparatus that we can get on the road. So, happy to have that piece for us. We're always finding ways to share resources with neighboring agencies. We're a combination department, paid and career, paid career staff and volunteers. Volunteerism numbers are way down across the country, unfortunately. Kaiser's in the same boat, Salem has limited resources. When we get, all get big fires, we're all playing together, sharing resources, and we're always trying to help. And we help each other on a daily basis, going cross-borders, closest unit, and helping each other, and pretty drama-free, which is nice. We always look for grants, we're always after what we call free money, or somebody wants to give us some money to do some projects, we'll do that to pay for anything, and then Marion County, we have a kind of a philosophy that when something needs to get done, we just do it. When we face financial shortfalls or potential for layoffs, we'll take pay cuts, we'll lay off the minimum amount of people just to make things happen. Two thousand and twelve, when mass recession assessed value was not going up very much, all of our personnel took about four hundred thousand dollars worth of pay cuts on our backs. So we did not have to lay anybody off, which would have impacted the services we did to the publics. Just a little bit about our revenue, our balanced budget, obviously, we have about seventeen point eight million dollar budget. Majority of that comes from property taxes that are levied. Then we do get a little money from ambulance transport billing, and then our beginning fund balance. We operate on a permanent tax rate and a levy. We also have a bond out there that we'll be retiring soon. Being a public entity and not connected to the county, we're pretty much on, with the property taxes. Personnel is our biggest cost, people cost money. When our volunteer numbers are down, we've got to have career staff so we can answer the calls when the public calls, because when they call nine-one-one, they don't care really who's coming, they just want somebody to show up and deal with their issue. And that's what we do at the base state. So, personnel, some materials and services it takes to operate the Fire District, some reserves, a little bit of debt service, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. We did a ten million dollar bond back in two thousand and eight that we'll be retiring in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-four, that we plan to let retire and not go back out for. Property taxes, a dollar ninety for our assessed value, base rate, because we can't ever increase the permanent rate in the state of Oregon. We have a seventy-one cent operations levy, and then we have the bonds that fluctuate around thirty cents or so. One thing that's unique for us compared to other agencies, our size of fire service, our rate is very low. I call it a, we're funded on a rural tax base, trying to provide urban services. We have the north end of Kaiser, we have Four Corners, and the Hayesville area, all urban services, they expect city services, but a dollar nineties are a pretty low dollar figure to try to make that happen, but we do. One issue the fire service has been dealing with for quite a few years, that's been a major change from the history of the fire service, it used to be all volunteers. But even the big states like Pennsylvania, where they're, that's where the volunteer fire service started, they are seeing massive decrease in the number of volunteers. You know, people are stretched for time, the training requirements are very high to become a volunteer firefighter, or a firefighter in general. And they, people are just prioritizing, and they want to give back to their community, but they can't. This is just a little, some data, the red lines are career staff, gray lines are volunteers. We have about sixty-five on our roster, fifteen of those are what we call support services, which are basically the retired folks. Those fifteen have a combined four hundred and seventy-one years of service with the district. So they're old retired people. They come down and they do a lot of the parades and antique fire trucks, but that number when I started in two thousand and one was over a hundred and twenty-five volunteers. Our call volume, our area hasn't really changed, our call volume has gone up two hundred and fifty percent, yet our volunteer numbers are half of what they were in two thousand and one. But, as you can see, Jackson County Three, Kaiser Fire is the fourth one over from the left, there are fifteen volunteers. We were all very rich in volunteers years and years and years ago, but it's just not the case anymore. So, when the call needs to come in, if you don't have the volunteers, you got to get career staff, but you got to balance that with the resources you have, which is the dilemma that we all are facing in public service. Call volumes, thirty-seven percent increase in the last six years for us, it's just sky-high. We'll see what the cold and flu season brings this fall, this, the rest of this fall and the winter, which they say is going to be bad, which will end up being more call volume and more transports to the hospital, just as an aging population. They're living longer, they have more complex medical problems, and they need to get to the hospital and want calls for service. And at the end of the day, if somebody needs something, if they don't know where to go find it, they call nine-one-one and we show up for them. And we're happy to do that. As our call volume goes up, our response times due to, that call volume's going up about three point seven percent a year. However, we did a strategic plan just over a year ago that we put into place, and we've actually done some things with that strategic plan, doesn't just sit on the shelf, to address our call volume, make ourselves financially sustainable, get out in the community more, and then increase our partnerships. And these community interactions are part of that. But basically, long-term, we need to hire more personnel to respond to calls. Right now, we have averaged anywhere from eight and a half to eleven-minute response time. Our goal is seven, seven and a half minutes ninety percent of the time. So we're a little ways away from our benchmark, but we have a plan to do that. Just going to take some work to get there. Our strategic plan also identifies future capital needs, like I stated, the bond will retire in two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-four. Unfortunately, apparatus and fire trucks that cost half a million dollars in two thousand and eight don't cost a half a million dollars in two thousand and twenty, or two thousand and twenty-two, or two thousand and twenty-four. So, we're trying to figure out a way to pay for those as we go versus one big lump purchase at the same time, and that bond that we would have to go back out for isn't going to buy what it did twelve years ago, fourteen years ago. So, we need to replace those because they wear out, especially with a high call volume. But our goal is to better serve our community, and that's truly what it's all about. Two thousand and eighteen, we started a reserve account. Since that we had that bond, you kind of have to wait for the next bond to buy bigger apparatus and bigger purchases. We started a reserve account to start setting aside some money to pay for those, and then all of our, well, this year was a very mellow year for, well, in conflagrations. We'll take all that money that we get for apparatus and put that into that fund as well. Two thousand and eighteen was a banner year for going and helping other departments and getting reimbursed. But two thousand and nineteen, knock on wood, we've only gone to California once. But that's a good thing, things are burning. But, at the end of the day, the less debt, bonds that we, we don't have to read, give those to the, put those on the backs of the taxpayers, we can save them money. And work our way into our budget so we minimize any costs or increases in the taxes to the voters in more of an incremental approach. So, right now, our voters and our board is considering asking voters to increase our operating levy, which right now, we're on a four-year levy comes, this is the last year of the four-year. In the May two thousand and twenty election, we're asking potentially for another four dollars and sixty-seven cents a month, or fifty-six dollars a year. Basically, we're asking to go from that seventy-one cents up to ninety-nine cents in that tax rate. It is an increase, this will fund two additional firefighter paramedics to respond to increasing call volumes. More specifically, that will be two additional firefighter paramedics at the Clear Lake Station to increase the staffing up there, which would be in the North Kaiser community, which will basically allow us to keep the engines that we have in Hayesville and Four Corners more down there to answer those calls without having to run up here as much. So really, even though we put the personnel up here, decrease the response time up here provides greater reliability throughout our whole district. So everybody benefits. We also would bring back our Deputy Fire Marshal, we had to eliminate that position three years ago, trying to do inspections and making sure businesses are safe, and get us a little help for our Fire Marshal that's overworked. She's trying to do a ton of work and do a little bit of pub ed, we want to bring that position back. The final thing that increase in the levy would do, would be to start buying some apparatus and equipment without having to borrow money. Obviously, when you do bonds or leasing, you have to pay interest on those things. By paying cash, we would get out of that, and then we can start replacing our apparatus more incrementally, and then it won't all wear out all at the same time. And like I said, as for the bonds, at the point we retire our bonds, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four, we may ask for additional funding for more personnel, apparatus purchases, but basically, it's, we're at the point where we're going to ask for the voters to increase anything that we would need to provide additional services, ask for it when we need it, opposed to, we're going to save money for four years till we actually need it, or save that time. We'll come back to them incrementally, just for what we need to meet our response standards and what they've told us through our strategic planning process. Lots more information available at our website. As we continue to develop the levy plans, there'll be more on there. One thing that the levy is important, because we can't increase that permanent tax base, unfortunately, but with the decrease in number of volunteers, we've got to have some career staff, more career staff than what the base rate would. So, if, without the levy, we'd be reducing services, response times would increase, reliance on mutual aid, asking Kaiser, Salem, Silverton. We'd all be doing the same thing, you know, if they did, everybody else didn't have the same revenues that they need to provide services, we'd be going and helping them. Timeline, we're doing next, actually, this Thursday, we're doing a public information session at five o'clock at our, at the Shametada Brooks Campus, right before our board meeting, that the public is invited to look at as presentation, ask questions about the proposed levy. The board's not going to take any action until January, so they're, we want to hear from the public, what they think of our plan, how it'll affect them. Lots and lots of education, and then propose to go to the ballot in May, two thousand and twenty. Hopefully, we continue to be blessed with the taxpayer support that this district has had for a very long, long time. There's my contact information, we have Facebook, Twitter, website. Feel free to call, stop by, send me an email, I'm happy to answer any questions. Can always, if you want to get ahold of the Board President, we can get you in touch with him as well. Happy to answer any other questions, if you have any, or I appreciate the time that you've given me.
Thank you very much Chief, we really appreciate you coming and sharing the vision for Marion County Fire District. And does anybody have any questions of Chief McMahon? Counselor Smith.
Hi Chief, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing good, I actually just wanted to say thank you, because I actually had to, for the first time in twenty years, call nine-one-one earlier this year for my daughter, and your guys' response time professionalism and how kind they were to her, she was having a kidney problem, so she was in a lot of pain. They took her down to the, to the hospital and just absolutely made it a lot easier, not only on her, but also on me. So I want to personally thank you, and I do live in the North Kaiser area, I also understand there's been quite a bit of growth up there, so I'm imagining you have a little bit more of a population, so I'll be interested to see additional information on this to help support that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Herrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you.
I had really good relationship as a former public Brooks person with your station up there. And a shout-out to your Board President over there, Mike Walter, I wanted to, I switched to my church days, so don't think. This is a great presentation, and I wish you a lot of luck on your, like I said, I've been to your events. You guys are strictly professional, you do a really good job, and nice presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Appreciate it.
Is this your first presentation?
To the council, yes.
It went well.
Thank you.
Chief, quick question, so as Salem continues to urbanize areas out, you know, bring it into their urban growth boundary and urbanize that and sort of take it away from the county, how does that impact your guys' budget?
As they annex into the city, that takes it out of our tax, off of our tax rolls and puts it onto theirs. Luckily, so far, the, most of that land has all been vacant property. The old pick suite property across from our main station, they're putting six hundred and some homes in there, but that's all bare land, so it's not a big chunk of tax revenue, but as that, they annex, that's revenue out of our pockets, that we, our revenue goes down, but we still have to provide the same service, because that bare land didn't really create any calls for us.
So are you, are you planning for that as, as you look out into the future?
Yes, we are planning, trying to plan for that, on how that impacts us, and trying to figure out where we can help with growth, and look at call volumes, we're working with the county commissioners on the Brooks, because all of Brooks, there's high hopes for the Brooks community, which potentially would bring revenue that would offset that city of Salem. And then we're trying to work with the city of Salem cooperatively to get fastest engine and ambulance responses as well. But it is, it is a challenge that continues to face the district.
Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's the.
Move your microphone so it faces you.
I have a sign that says not to touch.
I know.
Touch it just this, just this time.
Just once.
Just this one time.
You're following instructions.
Every once in a while, I do what I'm told. So, is it, what is the policy now, when you, when you run a medic, do you also run an engine, or how do you pick and choose what you run?
Based on the priority level that the dispatch center, based on the caller's information, the dispatch center has a protocol that they follow. And they're into priority one, two, three, and four on any call. Priority one gets an engine and a medic, priority ones and twos gets an engine and a medic, threes get a medic only, and fours get an engine only. So it's really what the caller is, and based on what they're answering, the questions they're getting, or the lack of information they're sharing, will create that, that, the level.
Do you have a guess of what that percentage is for, for the double, double-vehicle rolls?
Probably eighty-five to ninety percent of the calls are emergency or priority ones or twos. Pretty much anybody with chest pain, shortness of breath, dizziness, they're in shock, they feel like they're going to pass out, gets a priority one or two and an engine and a medic.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you so much Chief, we really appreciate your time, and Deputy Chief Lee and Director Walter, thank you for joining us tonight, and don't be strangers.
We will not.
All right.
We appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this takes us to our second Special Orders of Business, which is a proclamation for Small Business Saturday, and I'm pleased that we have members of the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce here to receive this proclamation as we celebrate and support our small businesses. The proclamation, let's see if I can start that one over again, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the city of Kaiser, Oregon celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty point seven million small businesses in the United States, and they represent ninety-nine point seven percent of all firms with paid employees in the United States, and are responsible for sixty-nine, sixty-four point nine percent of net new jobs created from two thousand to twenty eighteen, and whereas small businesses employ forty-seven point three percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas ninety-four percent of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community, and whereas ninety-six percent of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go to small, independently-owned retailers or restaurants that they have not been to before or may not have otherwise tried. And whereas fifty-nine percent of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year, and whereas the city of Kaiser supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and invigorate our community. Now, therefore, I, Kathy Clark, Mayor of the City of Kaiser, together with the Kaiser City Council, assembled in regular session, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2019 as Small Business Saturday and urge residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. So I'd like to make this presentation to the Chamber of Commerce, so you can not only display this, but also help us get the word out, or we can help you get the word out about our small businesses. Jonathan, did you have anything you would like to add before the presentation? All right. Thank you so much for being here, and thank you. Thank you. All right, let's rock and roll on Small Business Saturday.
There you go.
So we can make our Small Business Saturday being large business for our small businesses. That is all I have under Special Orders of Business tonight. This takes us to committee reports, and I have two here tonight. We'll start with Jeremy Grins, who's going to give a report on Planning Commission.
Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for having me this evening. My name's Jeremy Grins for the Planning Commission. I don't have a lot to report.
Well, bring the microphone a little closer to you. Perfect.
I don't have a note, sorry. I don't have a lot to report. It's okay. I do find myself privileged to have the ADU hearing out of the way for, for my commission here in my, my second meeting. We got that out of the way last week. We'll be getting a motion in front of you shortly. Then discuss the milestones for the Housing Needs Analysis, Buildable Lands Inventory follow-up that you guys will be voting on tonight, I believe. No? Sorry.
I know he's got a fast turnaround, but that'd be really fast.
Okay. Other than that, don't have much to report. You guys have any questions?
All right, thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Grins? Thank you for your work on that. I know there's a lot of detail and looking forward to receiving those, those agenda items soon.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Parks, Mr. Lawyer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, and members of our amazing city staff. Kickoff first with Clegg Creek Watershed Council. This is last weekend, two weekends ago, excuse me, we had kind of our first project where we did some tree cleanup and tree replanting at the Kaiser Rotary Arboretum in honor of Wilbur Bloom. I think we need to come up with an acronym for that one, but 30 to 50 kids from Whittaker and McNary, as well as a bunch of Rotarians. You know, Madam Mayor, you were out there, so was Counselor Reed and a few others. And so just another one of our good kind of kickoff projects. Interestingly enough, the, this year, so to speak, has kind of coincided with the school district, school starting, because over the last few years, we've had a lot more participation with our students, which has been very helpful in engaging them in community activities and getting their volunteer hours for leadership or National Junior Athletic Society or what have you. And so when it comes time for the grading period, kids are always willing to come out. And so we might have to kind of move our next project just a little bit, but very good outcome. We planned on three hours. We were done in about an hour and 45 minutes. Just goes to speak of the quality of work that was done and how fast we can get things done. We've got a lot of people out there, so if there's no questions on that, I'll move on to the next part.
Looks like we're good.
Okay. So on Tuesday, November 12th, we had our regular Parks meeting, and we had a couple interested citizens come up. Peggy and Jerry Moore got a grant in October and weren't planning on getting it done until June, but they're done now. So they got their new flower boxes built, planters over at the Peggy and Jerry Moore Community Garden. They still have a hard time saying that, but that's okay. And so on time, under budget, and they were able to be reporting on that. And it's going to get about a 15 to 20-year lifespan out of the new boxes because they're better wood. So we're pleased with that. We had a grant request come in from Jeff Davis. If you recall, last year, he did two exercise equipments in Meadows, but the Country Glen and then Clegg Creek Park. And he came in this year, and he's doing three in his proposal at Meadows, Kaiser Rapids, and I want to say Wallace House Park. And so he was successful in getting a $10,000 grant for that, and will be putting that to work probably just as soon as the ground starts to dry up just a bit. Imagine probably it'll be complete May-June timeframe, so really exciting. He's going to be also looking at some outreach and some other things that he can put into play to highlight those exercise equipment options. And we heard from Counselor Herrera that the, the folks over at Country Glen have been using the equipment out there quite often. At first, it was just kind of this fun little backflips. It's amazing. Fun, fun little anomaly. And then, you know, Counselor Herrera reported that he's actually seen somebody out there setting up video equipment and then doing workouts and stuff like that. So getting some attention, which is good. And so we're really looking forward to the work that Jeff is able to bring in. This is also going to carry on the second part of the $25,000 grant he got from Rotary. And so it's a $36,000 total investment, and the city's Parks Grant Program is going to put $10,000 of that. So we're getting $26,000 with the work and product out of, out of our folks. We had a second grant request, which was from Wayne Frye. And if you recall, Wayne, a number of years ago, did a really good job of kind of putting up a soccer field out at Country Glen as well. Unfortunately, over, over the course of its life, there's been some damage to it and very little use. And so as we've talked with Wayne about this project, we decided to kind of put it on hold for right now. And he and I worked together on a survey that we sent out to most of the folks in the Greater Gupsir, and the survey responses were very good. Many, probably 75% of the respondents didn't even know there was soccer options at Country Glen. And so we're going to look at a potential new way to look at that for Country Glen Park and see if we can make that a very successful project. One of the other things we're looking at right now is looking at our memorial policy. So in terms of putting benches or other things out in parks, this came about a few months ago. Zira, who's on the Parks Board, has found a trellis over at Clegg Creek Park, and the trellis has been more or less abandoned and in really bad repair. And this was put in sometime back in 1992. And Debbie and I kind of did some research, and I didn't have anything better to do with two hours of my life on a Sunday, and actually found one paragraph in some minutes from 1993 where one of the Parks Board members had commented, there's a trellis in the park, and somebody's going to pay for it, we're just not really sure who. And so we're going to look at that and see if maybe we can clean it up and get it updated. And found some additional information about the woman it was, it was honored for. And so I'm going to be talking with our excellent Kaiser Times newspaper to see if we can get a cool little article on it. But he doesn't know about that, by the way. No, he doesn't. But beyond that, you know, as you know, the shade sales are up, and I had some drone video that I showed at the Parks Board. It's just really cool to kind of put a, put a cap on the construction season and be very proud of the work that was done this summer. And yeah, I think that's it. Parks Board's staying busy. We're not getting bored, so that's awesome.
Any questions on the Parks Report? I'm hoping with all this exercise equipment that those of us of a certain age will stay in better shape, so we reduce the call volume for Marion County and Kaiser Fire. That's a great investment that hopefully we can stay fit longer. Questions on the Parks Report? Anybody? All right. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it and all the good work that's going into our parks. They looked great this year. All right, I don't have any other committee reports. So this time will take us to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the schedule, agenda, scheduled for a public hearing. We have one public hearing scheduled tonight, authorizing the city manager to transfer city-owned property known as Tax Lot 063W36BB03500 to Charles E. Baker Jr. and Faith A. Baker. So if you would like to address council on any other matters, love to call you up. And I'm going to start off with William McNutt. I'm sorry, I couldn't read.
Thank you for your time this evening. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Salem Kaiser Beacons Board, and Counselor Roland Herrera is one of our board members. It's a group of, of about four retired athletic directors in the Salem Kaiser School District, along with some private citizens and also some teachers. And our mission is to help promote athletic participation at the six Salem Kaiser High Schools. And then also to help promote student athletes participate who may not be able to pay the fees that are involved now for student athletes, which for a single sport is $175. And if you had a, if you had a family of two and each of the student athletes were in two sports, that would be a $700 fee, which is a cap. We're a young group that in 2018, our group donated $30,000 to Salem Kaiser. Each one of the high schools received $5,000 from our group for student athletic participation. And we feel that the schools at the school level, the administration and the athletic directors are going to best know their needs with their student athletes at each school. So we entrust each of the schools to use those fees in a way that's most appropriate. We also like to try to encourage still that there is some split, or the parent or grandparent has what we like to call skin in the game. And that way, if we have, say, it's a half scholarship, now we can help twice as many student athletes. We have an event each year. Actually, 2018 was our first event. 2020 is February 1st of 2020. That'd be at the Salem Convention Center. We would love for you to be able to come and, and honor each of the schools as an honoree that they give us, they give our board, each school four selections, and then we choose an honoree for each of the six Salem Kaiser High Schools. And then we also honor two community people as well, so there's eight honorees. In the Kaiser community, there's some great folks. Bob and Pam Zelinski are the representatives for Kaiser, for McNary High School. One of the community members who I was very involved with when the installation of the turf field at McNary High School, Ted Ignagnus. And I just wish that he could be with us. Ted passed a few months back, and he was a huge help to me as a project manager in that field piece. And also to North Salem, but also with some Kaiser ties is Gib Gilmore. So he's the North Salem representative. Our goal that we would like to try to achieve in Salem Kaiser is to get the student athlete participation level at 50% of the enrollment of the high schools. I can give you kind of a little bit of some numbers for you, so you know what 2018, 2019 looked like in Salem Kaiser at the six high schools. 2019 and 2020, we just have, and we're just starting on that. So those figures, we won't know until the end of the year. But here are your participation levels at your six Salem Kaiser High Schools. North Salem with an enrollment of 1,644 students had 675 student athletes in at least one sport. South Salem High School with an enrollment of 1,817 students had 827 student athletes participating in at least one sport. McKay High School with 2,281 students enrolled had participation level at 789 student athletes in at least one sport. McNary High School, 1,912 in enrollment with 835 student athletes participating in at least one sport. Sprague High School, 1,667 students enrolled with participation level at 665 student athletes in at least one sport. And West Salem with an enrollment of 1,760 students with approximately 720 students participating in at least one sport. So for a total for Salem Kaiser at the six high schools, you have approximately 11,081 students with currently at, with 2018, 2019 numbers, 4,511 student athletes participating in at least one sport. That's a percentage of 40.7%. It's actually up 1% from the year before. One of the things that is a factor that's nationwide that you don't see is football in the United States is down 15% across the board with concussion issues all across the United States. So even with those decreases in participation in football, they're still up, which is great. Student athletics promotes some great qualities: teamwork, cooperation, leadership, citizenship, sportsmanship, and we hope that carries over to the NFL after last week, work ethic, and self-esteem. Give you kind of another highlight as far as some, some facts, kind of a national thing that's done with the National Federation of High Schools, the Fortune 500 executives. 18% were in high school newspaper. 35% of them were involved in scouting. 37% were involved in music. 43% were involved in National Honor Society. 54% were involved in student government. What do you think athletics was? 95%. Salem Kaiser budget currently is around $420 million. High school athletics is a fabulous value for your dollar at less than 1% of their total budget. How can you help? You can go, and we'd love to have you come to the event to support. We've got a lot of Kaiser folks involved and being honored this year. Love to have you come support. You can go to our website at Salem Kaiser Beacons and make a donation to help support a student athlete if you choose. A dinner ticket is $50 to attend. Starts at 5 o'clock. There's social from 5 to 6. 6 to 7, we'll have dinner. And from 7 to 8, we have a speaker for about 20 minutes. And then we have eight videos that are prepared, and it's kind of fun. The CTEC Audio Video Group is doing all the interviews and all of the videos for the eight recipients for it. So it's a great tie-in with the school and Salem Kaiser. The other community benefactor besides Ted are the five Salem Kaiser Les Schwab managers. Through the years, Salem Kaiser has participated and has helped with thousands and thousands of dollars for student athletes in the state of Oregon. I thank you for your time. Love to be able to answer a question if you have any questions for me.
All right, thank you very much, city manager.
A question. So when you, when you mention 4,000-plus students involved in sports, at least one sport.
Yes.
Is that discrete individuals or is that, I mean, are you counting? You know, what if somebody does four sports or three sports?
It's just one. The other thing that's been a good question that, that those figures don't include, they do not include club activities. And so one of the questions that people have had is what about the, the club activities? It's not that we don't think those are great, whether it's lacrosse, whether it's water polo and such, but there needs to be a control mechanism for your six Salem Kaiser High Schools as far as money and as far as coaching. They need to have control to be able to hire and fire those individuals, control money. So we have to draw the line there. It's not that those other programs aren't It's not that those other programs aren't fabulous. And I have no idea what their participation fees are, but I think lacrosse gear is probably $600. That's not including traveling and those type of things. And those are great alternatives for students. So actually, that participation number is actually a little higher if you bring that in place too. Hope that helps answer your question. Any other questions?
Council Herrera.
I just wanted to make a comment. Thank you, Bill. That was great.
Thanks, Roland.
I believe you attended with me last year, two, the one at Cummins Center, and that's an invite again for this year, so.
Noted.
But I like what Bill said about the Kaiser flavor because although Gib is honored and well-known in the North Salem area, he's one of us, really. And that's a special part for me because I was honored to coach with him for many years and watch him and watch the professionalism of true, I mean, these gentlemen that make up this board are true devoted youth sports people, high school sports people. I mean, I'm amazed that I'm even with these guys. You've got Mike McGann, all these retired people that have worked hard and put turfs and had raised all this money to help these kids, literally. And it's just an honor to be part of it. But and of course, I had kids that participated. And there's a lot of kids that, like I was telling them at the last meeting, the demographics are changing and there's folks that don't have the money to pay those high. I was listening to a football game on the way back and I was telling him, it was kind of interesting because I thought it was soccer because Hernandez tackled by Gonzalez. And I thought, wow, it's changed over the years. So it's kind of cool. Again, there's a need for high school athletics to save a lot of lives in terms of which way they're going, not only for the Fortune 500, for the regular guys too. So and I appreciate the comment, Bill. That was great. And that was my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for coming and sharing this with us. Make sure that, do you have a Facebook page or other?
There is a Facebook page as well, and you can go right to the, again, the Salem Kaiser Beacons website. You can also look, there's a bio on all of the six high school award honorees, and also a bio for the two community people, which is the Les Schwab manager, and a wonderful bio for Ted Ignagnus.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for making sure we know about it and we can share it out. And thank you for the work you're doing for our very, very important community members, our young people.
Thanks for your time this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I don't have anybody else signed up for public testimony? Is there anybody else who would like to address the council on anything that's not scheduled for public hearing? All right, then we will go into our public hearing. And that will be resolution authorizing the city manager to transfer city-owned property known as tax lot 063W36BB03500 to Charles E Baker Jr. and Faith A Baker. And I will open the public hearing. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. I have an interesting matter that I've been working on for a few months. Mr. Baker came to us a few months ago, started with Community Development Department, got transferred to me. It indicated that he was in the process of setting up a trust and had discovered that the boundaries didn't appear appropriate. After spending a lot of time spinning my wheels with the county surveyor and title company, et cetera, it, not sure if there was actually an error or not, but there was some indication that back in this project, and I was around, I lived on McLeod at the north end when this project, some of you may have been around long enough, in the late 90s there, around 1999, they widened it just 20 years ago. And it used to be just gravel shoulders and they put bike paths and sidewalks. And we had to acquire quite a bit of ground there. Fortunately, we were able to do it without any condemnation matters. This triangle that we're referring to was a remnant piece that I think was probably incorrectly correct, created by the county in some survey error, but somebody owned this. We had to buy it from them. And it's the corner of Mr. Baker's property. And there's some indication that that line was supposed to be fixed back then is what he was indicating, which may or may not be true. But the entire parcel is .01 acres, and that does not include a nine-foot dedication plus another one-foot easement. So if you look at the drawing on the second page there, you can see it's, the entire triangle is .01, so the parcel that we're given is probably .007 or something. So considering the circumstances, it didn't seem appropriate to charge Mr. Baker for that since I don't think that the city wants to go mow that little piece of ground. So I told him I would go through this. I frankly was not going to take this to public hearing or even council, but since the stat, since it actually is conveyance of real property, I felt it was probably appropriate to go through the regular statutory process, even though it was so minor. So the statute just required, doesn't require appraisal, just requires some evidence of value on a per square foot basis. The entire parcel would be $640. I don't know what the actual tip of the triangle would be. So the recommendation is to pass, to hold a public hearing unless there's questions or concerns, pass the attached resolution which calls for conveying that piece of property to the Bakers, and the Bakers would pay for the recording of the deed. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? All right, I do not have anybody signed up to testify under this public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to address the council under this public hearing? All right, seeing none. That will close the public hearing. Council President Freeman.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 authorizing the city manager to transfer city-owned property known as tax lot 063W36BB03500 to Charles E Baker Jr. and Faith A Baker.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2019 authorizing the city manager to transfer city-owned property known as tax lot 063W36BB03500 to Charles E Baker Jr. and Faith A Baker. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And that is the only public hearing we have this evening. So let's go into administrative action. This will only take a moment, then we can get to B. Item 8A is a waiver of the community center fees for Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments annual business meeting. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On February 19th, 2020, the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments, of which we are a member and of which our mayor is the board president of, is asking to, is asking for the fees for the community center to be waived for them to hold their annual business meeting and dinner here. They did this last year, and at that point, the city council waived all of the fees except for staffing and the alcohol security deposits, which is number three, as listed on the second page of the staff report. And staff recommend city council discuss the options presented and then direct staff as to how you'd like to address this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? And just one thing I want to point out is that normally, this goes with whoever's the chair of the board. I ended up doing two terms because the person who was supposed to succeed me did not win reelection, and so that surprised me two years in a row. But I will be very happy to, I've enjoyed the time as the board chair, and I'll be happy to pass the gavel to Jackie Frankie from Schmeckert Community College in February, who will now be ready to assume those responsibilities. Council President Freeman.
I move that the Kaiser City Council do the same fee waiver as we did in 2019. So I'm going with option three, which is to waive the room rental fee and the security/cleaning deposit, but charge $180 for the staffing costs and the alcohol security costs of $150 for a total of $330.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council go with option three to waive the room rental fee and the security/cleaning deposit, but charge $180 for the staffing costs and alcohol security out of, security cost of $150 for a total of $330 for the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments annual business meeting and dinner. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item 8B is a waiver of the fee request for Kaiser Rapids Park Rotary Amphitheater for the Rise Services Incorporated. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I know that we have two members of Rise in the audience. If you guys want to come up real quick, and that way if there are questions, you can answer them while I provide my staff report here. The city has received a request for a waiver of fees for the use of the amphitheater for an all-inclusive concert on June 14th, 2020. Request is from Rise Services Inc., who is a not-for-profit organization providing support to individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. They currently provide services to 61 citizens in Kaiser. Services provided include residential service and support, employment service and support, in-home service and support, as well as community inclusion. The matter is before the council to consider whether it is appropriate to waive or reduce fees for the event. We've provided a breakdown of what those costs would be that they're asking for waiver of. It is appropriate for council to consider the matter of fees and make a minute motion to deny the waiver request, waive some of the fees or waive all of the fees for the June 14th, 2020 Rise Services Day of Music in the Park at the Kaiser Rotary Amphitheater. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And if you guys would like to introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about Rise and...
I'm Crystal. I'm with Rise Services, I'm sorry, Crystal Lorre. I'm with Rise Services. I've worked there for about five years. It's very close to me. I have a son with autism.
Pull the microphone a little closer so our people at home can hear you. Thank you so much.
Very close to my heart. I have a son with autism. Rise Services has changed my son's life, and I see it daily change other people's lives as well. It's very important that our community overall accepts our individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities as a part of our community, and they become inclusive. Right now, we still see a struggle within our community of that, and our goal is to create more events where there's more opportunity for our individuals to integrate into the community and have events that are theirs that they're able to potentially invite other community members to.
Thank you.
I'm Richard. I'm a founder, serves coordinator with Rise. I've been there just over four years, and the company has changed my life. They're absolutely amazing what they do in the community for all the people that we serve. Um, we're in four different states. We've been in business for over 30 years, and it's just been a big turning point for me just to be part of this whole process here at Rise.
Can you speak about the event you're actually talking about putting on just a little bit?
Basically, we have a, one of our DSPs that worked for us is in a band, and his band and another band is going to put on an event just for our people there that work and also that we support. So hopefully, you know, we'll get a chance to do something nice like this in the community in Kaiser.
So the idea is more of a concert that we are putting on for the individuals we support and the DSPs that we employ. They can bring their individuals to this event and enjoy a day of music. I'd like to see somewhere like Guitar Center be involved and maybe bring down some of their equipment so the individuals can maybe experience what it's like to touch some of this equipment and maybe play it on their own. Just kind of an opportunity for them to do things they haven't done in the past.
So this will be open to the public to come and join in?
This year, no. We are gonna, so my goal would be to future years, create something of a benefit concert. This year, we would just be inviting Rise clients and DSPs, the individuals supporting clients. I don't know that we could go that big this year. I'm just scared that that would get too out of control. The two bands that we do have have some local notoriety, so I would hate to kind of go outside of the range of what we're looking for. We were expecting around 100 attendees.
And then would anybody be charged admission or would be free for your invitees to attend?
This year would be free. My goal would be next year to create something where we're able to charge for people to attend and have a benefit concert where we're raising awareness for individuals in our community.
That does change the dialogue if it's a fundraiser versus, or ticketed or not ticketed?
Correct, yeah. And this year, I'm not looking for anything along those lines. This is kind of a trial run to see how it goes, how people, the interest that is within our organization, when I shared this within our organization, we got a lot of excitement. So I was excited to see how quick that caught on. It was kind of an idea that just grew real quick. So this year, we're keeping it small.
Okay. And what day of the week is this? I didn't look.
Sunday.
It's a Sunday?
Yeah.
Perfect. All right. Council Coler and then Council President Freeman.
So does that conflict at all with our events in the park now as far as, because do we have anything on Saturday that year, that time of?
Is this a Saturday or Sunday?
This is a Sunday.
A Sunday.
Well, if we had a concert Friday or Saturday night, would that, we'd have to get it all cleaned up and everything for this?
Yeah, they typically do anyway because sometimes we have church services down there. So they know, events know that they need to clean up that night. So it shouldn't conflict if anything.
Council President Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since I'm not familiar with Rise and I did look on your website and tried to find some information, and maybe it was late last night and I didn't look in the right places, but can you just talk about your organization? Are you, do you receive your funding from the state? Are you, do you contact with the state? How are your services paid for by the, for the clients that you currently serve? That will help me kind of understand, you know, if, I understand nonprofits, it's my background, but I also understand that there's some contract work potentially. And so how is your organization funded?
We are funded through Medicare. We work alongside Marion County DD Services and other county DD Services. So we qualify our individuals under what is called the K Plan or an Individualized Service Plan, and then they qualify for our services. So it's paid through Medicare.
Okay, thank you. All right. Council Herrera.
Some of my questions have been answered, but I just thought of something. This is a first time you're doing this type of event, correct?
Yes.
Now, how would you handle a situation where it's a closed event? Do you just turn people away, just tell them you can't come or listen to music or? Is it ticketed? Is that you have to have a ticket?
Nope, it's not ticketed being in the park. I'm a little unsure myself of how we would handle that. Really, I would hope that we would have some small, you know, area surrounding it where we have a lot of staff who would be there. We have seven coordinators. I actually haven't seen the amphitheater to have any idea in my mind of what I'd be working with, to be honest. That would be helpful for me to know. But what I picture is that we would have coordinators around the perimeters. We would have our staff there to kind of just, kind of be our own security in a sense.
And to follow up, there's a reason I ask, because in my ventures of going through there with my dog, usually have people, something going on, they'll stop by and kind of just look at, you know, stopping us in music or whatever.
Right. And I would imagine that wouldn't be too crazy, and that would be acceptable as long as we didn't have a mass amount of people. That would be my biggest concern, would be people drawn to the music.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Council Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is this during the day then?
This would be a noon to 4 event, so yes.
So Council Herrera is right. As people go by the amphitheater, you're gonna have folks stop and kind of check it out and so forth. I would advise going down and taking a look at it. It is a large venue, and the access points are at the top, but it's very open. People can come along the side, so it is a very open space. And, but I don't anticipate, based on my experience down there, that, you know, if a lot of the activities happen near the front, people tend to stand near the back anyway and kind of check it out from a distance. But if the music's fabulous, they're gonna sit down and listen.
Right.
That's gonna happen.
Right. And that would be somewhat exciting, and it would help me feel like next year, what we want to do is more feasible, just to see how this year turns out. I would love to see people interested. I just have a little bit of fear of how big it could get.
Yeah, that time of year during the summer on a Sunday afternoon, the park's gonna be pretty busy. So there'll be a lot of folks there, and I guarantee you that they will be drawn like moths to the music. You know, that being said, if you don't advertise it, you'll keep folks who wouldn't normally sort of naturally be in the park from going there purposely to.
Exactly. And our goal would be to only advertise it within our organization to our DSPs and to our clients and families.
I have a follow-up.
Council President Freeman.
Madam Mayor, thank you. So I'm just gonna say, I'm a little concerned you haven't been to the park to really see the layout. It's a beautiful park, and I agree with everything that's been said. It's big. There's also the dog park this there, so you have a lot of people there. There's sand volleyball courts, and we have our big toy play structure there that is highly used in the summertime if it's a really nice day. highly used in the summertime if it's a really nice day. So I guess I'm just wondering if, do you really want to check out and look at the layout of the park first before you really take on this venture?
Well, in all honesty, I have been to the park. I used to take my dogs to the dog park there often. I have never been to the amphitheater, and it was recommended by somebody within my organization who has a lot of knowledge in the music industry, which is why I jumped on board with that, because I trusted his judgment.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel. Counsel President Freeman, do you have an idea direction?
Yeah, I will move that the Kaiser City Council waive all fees listed in the staff report for this event on June 14th, 2020, for their concert.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council waive all fees for the RISE, for, to use the Kaiser Rotary Amphitheater for the RISE all-inclusive concert. Any discussion? Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since they are not familiar with the facilities and what it would take to clean it up, would it be wise to do the refundable deposit just in case they didn't clean it up right, that we could just have the wherewithal to get that done? It's refundable if they, if they actually do the job right?
I think with the ones where we don't collect the deposit in advance, we have a credit card on file in case there is something. We do not. So would there be a way if there were some issues after the event, or would we not have that recourse?
We always have the option to invoice them after the fact, but we do not keep credit card numbers on file.
Okay. And is that part of our permit? When they're gonna apply for using the park, and in their agreement, there are certain requirements for setup, tear-down, and the conditions, also whether additional bathrooms and other facilities will be necessary? Is that included in our use agreement, if I remember right?
I'm not aware of that myself.
Yeah. The use agreement does mention all of those things, and so it lays out the event, and Public Works will have comments to them, so.
Okay. So for the additional facilities such as porta-potties and other things?
Right.
Those are the costs that would be incurred outside of these particular fees, so there'll be hard costs that, depending on the size of the event and the layout and so forth, will be part of the permit process. And then, I should have asked this question earlier. I'm not seeing whether food or beverage will be involved? No food or beverage will be involved. Okay. That helps tremendously with the cleanup. All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Have a great time. All right, that takes us to item 8C, which is an ordinance adopting the Kaiser Revitalization Plan, amending the Kaiser Development Code, amending the Kaiser Comprehensive Plan, Map, and Text, amending the Kaiser Zoning Map, amending Ordinance 98-389, and Ordinance 87-077. Phew, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Counsel. Well, we finally got the revitalization ordinance with all the attachments before you. I apologize, we weren't able to do that at the last meeting, that's why I tried to send it out early to you folks. You can see in the staff report, I indicated some changes. There was more than this, but the biggest parts were revising the parking section in Appendix 5 in the Olale District. There's some clarifications needed there. And then in the Lock Haven Center Master Plan portion, to reformat that so it would be consistent with how we do a Kaiser Station Master Plan, because it was kind of inconsistent with that format. Then we changed a few other sections, too. You can see, and I emailed folks late this afternoon, we received an email from the mayor yesterday on some requested changes, and I have on the dais before you those pages, and I want to go through those real briefly with you. The first page is not one requested by the mayor, but as I pointed out in my email, after it was finalized, I was reviewing for a different file, more ADU things, and House Bill 2001 changed what we can restrict in terms of parking restrictions. And so on the first page, if you look at the handout I have, at the very bottom, the second cell, if you will, in the matrix where it says accessory dwelling unit, all the way over on the right where it says proposed requirement, zero space. It used to say one space if you have two units. Can't do that anymore, and so since we just quite hadn't adopted this, I was able to make that last-minute change. And then on the next page is requested by the mayor, it's right in the center of the page, under Medical Centers. If you go over to the right, where it says notes, the second line is added where it says Surgery Centers or Day Surgery Facilities. And on the third page...
Oh, there it is.
Got it?
Yep.
Okay. And then on the third page, to be consistent with that, we have a list of prohibited uses. It's about two-thirds of the way down, B5, hospitals, I added the phrase, but not including Surgery Centers and Day Surgery Facilities. Those are, hospitals are prohibited. On the next page, this again is going back to the ADUs, and it's at the top of the page under C2, and so that first sentence was changed about no additional parking is required. We used to have one additional spot would be required if you had two ADUs, so that was the change there. And then on the next page, which is definitions, find it now, grammatical change right in the center, under grammatical interpretation, at the request of the mayor. And on the next page, yard, the three definitions at the bottom, front yard, rear yard, side yard, was simply a semicolon there instead of a comma. And on the next page, again, consistency down towards the bottom, hospitals but not including Surgery Centers and Day Surgery Facilities. That was changed. And then a footnote that Shane and I went over this morning, and the mayor was correct, footnote one isn't necessary anymore in the mixed-use zone, since all of those properties that refer to in footnote one fall in the RCOD in the centers. And so, to be consistent, it would make sense to delete that footnote. And I think, maybe we have one or two more. Oh, the next page is just a carryforward of the footnotes, so it's footnote seven at the top, because the number's changed, so it's a pagination issue. And then, the last page was the comma requested by the mayor at, it is in 3.114.03, second paragraph between about three lines down, four lines down where it says public hearing decision, comma, bypassing the hearings officer. So we inserted that comma. And those are all those changes. If there are no questions or concerns, the motion should read the title of the ordinance as amended by the handouts on the dais.
Okay, so press pause, questions. Counselor Ferrera?
Back up to page 35, and this probably makes sense. Why would the, the, no structures may encroach on any easement?
You know, we had a, we had a lot of problem with that, Counselor Ferrera. And, and the original draft, let's back up. This was a staff issue that, that we were trying to remember, and Nate remembered that it was Mr. Lawyer that was concerned that if, if read literally, it had nothing there, right? And he just said the yard extending, and it's just, it was not changed at all. But the way it read, it could be interpreted to mean that a building could come over an easement. And that was a concern, and so he put in, quite some time ago, just the words excluding easements. But Shane and I looked at that and said excluding easements just by itself could be read a different way, and I won't go into the details. It wasn't clear what excluding easements meant. So when we found out, okay, what Bill meant was, he didn't want to, he wanted to be certain that regardless of where you measured from, no structures could encroach on an easement, which is a given anyway, but that was, that was the point.
Is it me, or is it a little redundant, or not necessary, or is it me? You need to have that, huh? You decide.
We kind of thought it was redundant, but this is clear. We have people that argue the strangest things, and so when you have an op, when you have language that says a zero setback shall, you know, is allowed, somebody may get confused and say, wow, that means I don't have to pay attention to the easement. So just for reassurance, it was included. It's, I believe, I agree with you, however, it's, it does not harm to have it there.
Okay, now I understand, and I agree. That's why, that's why you get the big bucks, Nate, because you think of stuff like that. It makes sense now. I get it.
Any other questions to the staff report?
That was my question, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that. Give it your time.
All right, so that takes us through the changes. Were there any other questions that came up as you read through these absolutely page-turning documents? Which I think we've seen all of this several times, so it should have been hopefully a review. A lot of work has gone into it. All right. So given that, Counsel President Freeman, to put a motion on the table for us.
I move that the Kaiser City Council approve a bill for an ordinance as amended with this handout that's on our dais today, adopting the Kaiser Revitalization Plan, amending the Kaiser Development Code, amending the Kaiser Comprehensive, Comprehensive Plan, Map, and Text, amending the Kaiser Zoning Map, amending Ordinance 98-389, and Ordinance 87-077.
I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance amended with the materials that were presented to us on the dais, adopting the Kaiser Revitalization Plan, amending the Kaiser Development Code, amending the Kaiser Comprehensive Plan, Map, and Text, amending the Kaiser Zoning Map, amending Ordinance 98-389, and Ordinance 87-077. Any further discussion? Looking, looking. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And our Community Development Director is doing major happy dance.
Now we can start working on amendments.
All right. This is, this was huge. And again, our thanks to Mr. Brown, Mr. Witham, and all the work that has gone into this, our citizen advisory groups, Planning Commission. This was a large undertaking. All right, let's go on to our consent calendar. Counsel President Freeman, what's on the consent calendar tonight?
We have three items on the consent calendar tonight. Resolution 9A is extending the city manager's employment contract for 2020 to 2021. Resolution 9B is extending the city attorney's employment contract for 2020 to 2021, and approval of the November 4th, 2019 City Council Regular Session Minutes.
Thank you. Are there any polls for discussion? Seeing none, Counsel President Freeman.
I move that the council adopt the consent calendars, item 9A, B, and C.
I'll second that.
The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Counsel Liaison Reports. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of things.
Don't touch it, though. I know, but, sorry. But I had a text, yeah, I had a text from my husband saying he can't hear you at all.
So the whole thing.
That could be good or bad.
So, clearly, he can hear me just fine, so.
He just uses his voice.
Quickly, save her.
Thank you. The first thing I'd like to do is extend a thank you to Mayor Clark for attending the Traffic Safety Bike Ped Committee meeting for me on my birthday, and I appreciate that a lot, and appreciate the report back on that, and I'm sure she'll share some more about that in a little bit. I attended the chamber luncheon on November 8th, Tuesday, November 8th. James Hutchins, who was here earlier with Country Financial, put that on for the chamber, and it was lightly attended, but very well, great information. And then on the 14th, I was able to attend the Commissioner's Breakfast, and I always appreciate being able to do that. I don't get to attend that very often because of the work with, I do with the Latino Business Alliance, but that's, that was very good, and I appreciate the report that was done. And then Kaiser Community Dinner is on the 27th, coming up next week, and a couple of weeks, I guess. Anyway, the, it's, we need to make a note that the time has changed from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, so it's earlier than it normally is, but our council is gonna help serve that meal, and so everybody come and help participate. And then the Kaiser, earlier this week is the Kaiser Little League Task Force, Thursday night, and I'm looking forward to that.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I apologize for being late. I was at the community forum at McNary to discuss the student investment account, which is money that has been made available to us through the Student Success Act that was recently signed into law earlier this year, and we have, I believe, up to $36 million available to our school district. So the purpose of this forum was to discuss how best to use that money, and it was a really interesting discussion. Some of the things that the funds can be used for are class sizes, well-rounded education, instructional time, and health and safety, and they are geared to particularly reach out to our populations that have been traditionally under, underrepresented, or that are making up for the achievement gap. So, anyway, it was a fantastic conversation, and I appreciate all the members of our community who showed up for that, and there was some really good listening happening as far as the school district and what the citizens were interested in, and it was a fantastic conversation. So I appreciate the, the permission to attend that fully, so thank you. I attended the Kaiser Community Band Concert on the 6th. That was a fantastic concert, and we are getting some good bang for our buck in letting them use the community center. That was fantastic. I attended the Kaiser Homegrown Theater, She Kills Monst-, nope, that was a McNary play, She Kills Monsters, and that was really good. I was really, I didn't know what to expect. It was a very different kind of play than they've ever done before, and it was really impressive. Also attended the tree planting. It wasn't really tree planting so much as tree stewardship. We, we raked a lot of bark around there and made that Rotary, the, or the arboretum in Kaiser Rapids Park look lovely, and so that was a lot of fun, and attended the mayor's breakfast immediately after that. And then, we had a Kaiser Heritage Board Meeting, and nothing terribly much to report for that. I'll let Kathy talk about that since she's the official representative for that. We had a personal policy meeting on the 13th, and then the Crystal Apples on the 14th. And I want to take just a few minutes to recognize our McNary area nominees and honorees. There was Linda Olson, Dan Borison, and Tracy Rhodes from McNary, all fantastic teachers and just wonderful, wonderful contributors to our community. They're all fantastic. From Clear Lake Elementary, we had Guadalupe Lopez Garcia and Jason Erickson, and Jason Erickson was actually an honoree, the one and only one from Kaiser, so... And Jason Erickson was actually an honoree, the one and only one from Kaiser, so we congratulate him. And then we also had Jesse Leonard, the principal at Kennedy, and Holly Smucker at Kennedy. And then one, one of the more exciting highlights of the night was Matt Espinoza, who is a McNary alum, was not only, um, he, he was also nominated for, for this. And so that's fantastic that we not only have our, our teachers, but ours, also our alum being represented at that wonderful, wonderful, uh, organization, or awards evening. And in addition to that, I think that is about all that I have. Oh, I did go to the orchestra concert, yes. The McNary Orchestra Concert was also fantastic. So getting to those never-ending moments around here, always lots of fun stuff to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council President Freeman.
Uh, I attended the Personnel Policy Committee Meeting as well. Uh, the Marion County Commissioner's Breakfast was a lively one this time, and I don't know if it was just the day or what happened, but we had some really good conversations of just continued partnership between Marion County and us here in Kaiser. But one thing I do want to share with everyone is on November 22nd at 1:00 p.m. is the new, will be a ribbon cutting for the Veterans Service Office location at 780 Commercial Street, Suite 302. So this is the organization that helps veterans receive and get your services, if it's disability, if it's housing, if it's any type of services a veteran may need. This is the place that you want to go, and this is their new location. And it's on the corner of Mission and Commercial. So kind of a small little parking lot that you get in, that you come into on the Mission Street side, yeah. But I think that's really important, and so if you're able on the 22nd at 1:00, it's open to everyone, and we talked a lot about some other things that are in the works. And I just want to say I'm looking forward to Community Dinner on the 26th, but I'll be there about 4:30, because I have grandma duty. So, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
We're excited to have you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, on, let's see, November 5th, that was our very first Charter Review Committee Meeting. Way more interesting than I thought it was going to be, and appreciate the amount of work that Shannon has already put forth into this, breaking down each piece of the charter. Didn't really realize how much needed to be kind of re-sorted, clarified, and addressed, but it's becoming very interesting. A lot of discussions about wards, about term limits for all of us. Lot of different things, a lot of opinions that will be interesting coming forth as we continue to go through this whole thing. So it's actually enjoyable. I know I thought it was going to be boring, but it, I think there's a lot of conversation involved in that. 11, on November 14th, I covered for Councilor Free, President Freeman for the Planning Commission. And again, that was actually really interesting. They were talking about ADUs, and I was so excited. I understood what one of the acronyms up here actually meant. Um, so that was fun and very interesting. I'm looking forward to what the commission brings forth. And I will definitely say we have a very educated and very thorough group working on that, and very impressed with all of the work that they've put into it, and just the fine details that go into it. So thank you for the work that you guys have done, and looking forward to that. And then tomorrow is the Kaiser Public Arts Commission. And it looks like we're revisiting some things on some of the art out there. Nate knows more about that. Are we redoing some contracts or something?
Basically, it's the reoccurring quilt show that is being hung in December and January. And so the commission has to approve all the images of all the artwork that is displayed, and that's what they're doing.
Perfect, and it's really pretty, so I definitely would make sure you come see it once it gets up. And then I am looking forward to next week, serving at the Kaiser Community Dinner. But in the meantime, I'm heading to Vegas, so I'll see you when I get back.
You bet. Councilor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Wednesday, I attended the Kaiser Chamber Board Meeting. It actually didn't go as long as normal, but they sure get through a lot of things fast. They have all their sponsors for the parade. They're just looking for some more parade entrance. Uh, they got like six bands this year. Uh, so the parade, everything's, everything's going really well toward the parade, so looking forward to that in December. And then the next day, I attended the Marion County Commissioner's Breakfast Meeting, and the reason why it was so lively, because I was there. I haven't been there in a while, so you know, I had to make it more, you know, you know how it is. Uh, on Friday, then I, I, I attended the Veterans Ceremony at McNary High School, honoring veterans. I had to speak in a, in a couple of the classrooms. Um, and that was really enjoyable. The kids, the kids really ask a lot of questions. They really get into this. And we were served very, very good food by the, by the culinary team. And so I was very impressed. Food was very good, too. So I had a great time, and represented, veterans were represented well from all wars, all time zones. I thought that was pretty cool. Then on Sunday, I attended the Elks Vets Dinner. It was also, that was a free dinner. That was very nice. Uh, they served over 500 people on Sunday, veterans. Uh, and so that was, that was very nice. Pork loin and mashed potatoes and gravy, a whole big, whole big thankful. So I was, that was very enjoyable, too. Coming up, uh, we have a meeting on the 21st, but I'll talk to you about that, for the KLL Task Force, Kaiser Little League. Um, and then the 20th, I'm sorry, Wednesday night, Cook's Night Out, Hops and Drops, all those interested. That is an, a monthly chamber thing where they go to all the businesses, the restaurant businesses, and the chamber members, and once a month, one of them would do Cook's Night Out and invite the community to come, put your name in the hat for a $100 gift card. So come to Hops and Drops if you want this Wednesday. That's, yeah, that's in two days. No Volunteer Coordinating Committee this month. Next meeting will be January. Uh, look on the website. We always, always are looking for people, guys, so I think we still need a couple more people for Kaiser Points of Interest. And lastly, I will be gone on a cruise, so I'm going to want a pur Vegas trip. All right, so see you guys back in December. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Globetrotters. Councilor Herrera.
Is it going to Vegas and the cruise? I'm going to Woodburn this week. You know, okay. I, I want to mention something on the Crystal Apple Awards. Jason Erickson is a music teacher at Clear Lake, and he's amazing. Uh, also, we have a recipient who's from Parrish, but he's a Kaiser citizen, John Scott, which you might have met here. He was one of the guys who talked about inclusion, came with the, and he, he's ama-, he's really is an amazing guy.
Thank you for adding those. I, I was worried that I would forget some.
And our guys from Kennedy, we had two nominees, which is really great for one school. A lot of schools didn't. And being, and also Matt, having Matt over there, that's my wife's school, and that's really special to me. He is amazing also. A lot of our educators are great. I mean, they really are. Okay, I went to a whole bunch of stuff, but I'm just going to do some highlights because I went to Negocio, sorting with the Latino Business Alliance. And I did kind of a short presentation with, on the, on the beacons thing, which Bill did way better. He always does better. Um, and, and, and just to reiterate on that, that's very, I want Kaiser to be really involved in this year somehow. We'll figure out a way to do that, if I, even I have to buy a table myself. We'll, we'll figure it out. Also, um, I had the honor of being the first speaker at the Leadership, Cow Club Leadership, and my topic was, uh, strong people are nice and kind. And that was a, I did a lot of research on that. I've done it before, but, uh, I think what inspired me was, we had a, we had a speaker once that all the kids thought he was going to talk about police things. And he came over and he talked about love, and that really changed my whole concept of what a guy should come and talk to kids about, something that really matters to them. And that was kind of sparked my kindness thing. All right, I'm ready for the dinner next Wednesday, and what time do we get there, 4:00?
3:00.
3:00?
3:00.
It's going to be 3:30 for me, because I'm coming.
You get there at 4:00.
I'm going to get there as quick as I can, I promise.
Do you like to wash dishes?
Also, I attended, um, this, this week is a budget for mano a mano, and, uh, when you work with nonprofits, it's really complicated sometimes because you really, and, and most of you guys probably know that. But I tell you what, our leader, Levy Herrera, which is no relationship, just a McNary guy, is amazing, and he does a lot of really good, incredible work. And so that's why mano a mano is successful. We serve a lot of families. And one of the, what we do a lot this year is we've increased in helping with the food basket, something that's simple as that. But one of the things where I come in is to help folks navigate the system that don't know, that need things, that don't know where to go to get them, and lots of language barriers, you know. I'm fortunate because I got to use my Russian the other day, which is kind of cool. And, um, and it was pretty, pretty bad, but I mean, it worked. But I got through. I'm still not, not there yet. But anyway, um, like everything else, you have to practice, or else you don't get, get there. CTEC, we had a, a quick meeting on that because we're doing the videos for our event. Uh, I've been consumed with that. One of the things I do want to mention is that I've been really busy with the League of Oregon Cities, working with, for a presentation for League of Oregon Cities, which Kathy, you're aware of. And what we're doing is, and I've been working on it for a while, and since I've been there, I've wanted to make sure that folks have, feel, because they didn't have any classes on how to, um, guys from like the mayor of Baker City and what they roll, and how do I approach the Latino community and, and stuff like that. So what we're developing is a color caucus. Now that there's about 20 of us, people of color involved in the, so thanks to Sean O'Dea, who's a goldmine in terms of legal help, and he did it all for free. Helped me put together, it took us quite a while. So we're going to present on December 6th to the League of Oregon Cities when they do their Charter Review. So Charter Review, excuse me. And speaking of Charter Review, that was very interesting, the comments on this Charter Review, because, you know, I, it, I like when they bring stuff up that's kind of, that makes you challenge your mind, you know. That word thing, you know, is, to me, I know cities are going away from it, but it always makes me wonder if that would work for representation. So it's a discussion that should be had. And I also would like to compliment Shannon on the preparation you did for that. That was really pretty set up for everybody, I thought, you know, pretty. And it wasn't chaotic at all, like I thought it would be. And every time you do all these things, you always learn something else. It's amazing, because I thought, you know, I, I read the Charter, I did, I focused on what I wanted to do. I came over here and everybody had, they thought of stuff I never even thought of, you know. So it's kind of cool, regular folks. Anyway, so, uh, Holiday Parade, I don't know, it's something else, Crystal Apple Awards, I talked about that. I guess that's pretty much it for me. I'll come up with something later, I'm sure. Oh, uh, today we fed Kaiser United. Latino Action Committee was the host, and we fed them, and guess what kind of food we had?
What?
But it was fun. It's always fun of that, and I awarded Gary Steiner, who we all know and love. Uh, he does so much, but he's not as visible, you know. We, uh, he's home taking care of his, his wife most of the time, when he's not doing that, he's volunteering. But I had the honor of giving him the first In-N-Out hat at Kaiser. So I thought that was pretty special. That made my day. That's all for me.
All right. Thank you so much. I'm just going to add a couple of things. On the 5th, I did attend the Volcanoes Advisory Group, which was convened back in January when Mitch Graff came on board as the president for the Salem Kaiser Volcanoes, reviewing this year just passed and was coming up for the, this year ahead in terms of how do they continue to enhance the fan experience and grow the community reach for the Salem Kaiser Volcanoes. On the 6th, we had a special board meeting for the Council of Governments, primarily to deal with the Memorandum of Understanding between the Miblamit homeless, um, Miblamit Valley Homeless.
Alliance.
Alliance, thank you. I, I'm having a hard time with the new acronym. And, and the Council of Governments to make sure that the, uh, the agreement between the two pays for services and there's a sustainable model going forward. That was passed unanimously by the board. And then today, we had the Homeless Alliance Meeting of the Development Council, so that was received there. The application for the Continuum of Care is moving forward. I signed the cover letter today, so that package is getting ready to go to Housing and Urban Development in Washington, DC to create the Marion Polk Continuum of Care. This is going to be very, very important for our two-county area to better apply for funding for the services that meet the needs, especially our chronically homeless in our region, and to better staff and fund those services. The, um, the results of the negotiation with the Rural Continuum of Care went very well. Everybody worked, you know, toward the goal of making sure that the services that are being provided now under the Rock Rural Oregon Continuum of Care are sustained going forward into the Marion Polk Continuum. And so we will have, those services will be seamless. They will not be impacted by this change. Um, and we hope in a positive way going forward as this comes under the Marion Polk Continuum, that they will be able to avail themselves of even better collaboration and more funding to serve more people effectively. At the end of the day, that's the main thing, is serving people so that they can succeed and leave homelessness and receive the services they need sustainably. On the 7th, the Miblamit Area Commission on Transportation met, mostly receiving information and preparing for the, our meeting with the Oregon Transportation Commission, which is this week, if I remember correctly, on Thursday. For the Traffic Safety Bike Ped, Council Coler, you're welcome. Uh, it was very interesting. I was able to talk to them about some of the projects that are being funded through the Salem Kaiser Area Transportation, the Wheatland Corridor Study, Verta Lane, and some of the other questions they had regarding the recruitment for the Safe Ross to School Coordinator. That recruitment ends Thursday or Friday, so if anybody's thinking about, gee, I'd like to apply for that position, you have till Friday at the close of business, so you better get on it. Uh, that position will be housed at the Council of Governments and serve all of the schools in Salem Kaiser, something we've really needed. And I'm very excited to get that position funded and started. On the 8th, I got to go to Valley Inquiry Charter School and talk with second graders in Mrs. Eby's class. They were wonderful. They sent me a whole page of questions. Very thoughtful, from, um, do you live in a mansion? To, uh, you know, how do you become mayor? To, uh... Yeah, how much, things like that. Uh, so it was very thoughtful, you know, wanting to know what a mayor does, you know, how a city works. And we just had a lovely visit with those students. They were, um, they had great questions and great comments, so. Um, among them, I found a future city planner. I think she's going to be awesome at that. Uh, some others that are interested in law enforcement, so I put in a plug, and some others that are interested in future service as city councillors. So I think our, our future's in good hands. These were mentioned. The SEDCOR, Strategic Economic Development Corporation Luncheon this, uh, this month was focused on workforce development, and not in the traditional sense. Some of the programs that are reaching out to some of the folks that have had barriers to employment, and how our business sectors are working very hard to break down those barriers and make employment and employment success more and more open for people through re-entry, people leaving homelessness and domestic violence situations, outreach and successful programs for youth, and to not only recruit and retain, but promote people once they are working, and so people can be successful for careers. Uh, it was absolutely fascinating, and I was really happy to hear how our businesses are very much part of the solution when it comes to helping people be successful in the workplace. The, I want to piggyback on what Council Herrera said. The Latino Business Alliance Expo Negocio, this was their 10th annual event, very well-attended, and has some wonderful vendors from the state, from the local business community, as well as local governments. It was, um, it really speaks on how well that our different businesses are working together for the success and longevity of our Latino-owned and operated businesses and our entrepreneurs. Uh, the, talked about the Homeless Alliance, so coming up, the Oregon Transportation Commission on Thursday, and the Kaiser Little League Task Force Thursday evening. Task Force members, you will be getting the, the additional information tonight after I get home and send it to you. Uh, those agendas did go out. Let's see. This Saturday is the McNary Holiday Bazaar, which supports McNary Clubs and Activities. And Santa will arrive at Volcano Stadium on the 30th. Couple other things, make sure are on your calendar. Uh, the tree lighting will be on December 3rd. The Kaiser Community Band Holiday Concert will be on the 4th. Council Night at the Food Barrel for the Gubser Miracle of Christmas is on the 7th, and the Holiday Lights Parade on the 14th. So make, make sure those are all on your calendars. That is all I have, except for our youth councillor. Let me go to you, Mr. Wolfert.
Uh, didn't gather much this time around, but construction is going the same as it's been going, so from my perspective, it doesn't seem like anything's going too disastrous. It seems like it's going well. it seems like it's going well. Um, and for anyone who doesn't know, uh, Salem Kaiser Public Schools are not going to be open a while. Students aren't going to be attending, uh, school's closed, uh, this next Monday through Friday for Thanksgiving break, so I'm guessing you can--
But conferences, don't forget conferences.
Except for conferences. But in, in general, uh, you can probably expect less traffic during the time when school opens and closes, so that's good.
All right.
Please do come to conferences, if you have-- So, any, uh, Kaiser, um, kids in school, uh, I know the elementary schools are, are having conferences around this time, too, and we are, uh, always needing attendees at the high school, so please come.
All right. Thank you very much. Other business, this time is provided for the mayor's city council members or staff and opportunity to bring newer old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy.
I have nothing, thank you.
Tim.
I have nothing as well.
Chief.
I have nothing as well.
Okay, question for chief.
We have a question for chief.
Council President Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So chief, um, let's maybe go to our bad, but I haven't seen any, um, motorcycle, like, traffic patrol on River Road, either AM or PM, is it, or police presence on River Road? And, and I'm just talking about commute times, normal, you know, seven-thirty to eight and five to five-thirty, so are they hiding somewhere or just not? See, I'm just, you know, I used to see, um, the motorcycle, like, cracking you up over here?
Yeah, you said hiding, kind of got me with the wrong moment.
So I just, I'm just asking for my own--
I hear them all the time, um, in fact--
So they must be hiding, and I just don't see them, so maybe that's a good thing, I don't, I don't know.
I know, in fact, I, I know that they're going to be wrapped up in the In-N-Out Burger opening for that week to ten days, and the guys want to use the motors for that.
Yes.
And I'm thinking, as busy as those guys are on, are on River Road, I'm thinking we ought to, ought to be a different solution to the In-N-Out thing. So I was having the same conversation today, I've seen it a little bit differently.
Okay. Well, if they're there, great, they're just not there when I'm there, so I guess that's probably maybe even better. Thank you.
It's not somebody after her, that's what needs to happen.
All right, uh, Councilor Parsons.
Yeah, Chief, you have another question for you, too, and I, my memory probably doesn't serve me, but do we not print annual reports anymore in Kaiser? We used to all the time, and do we not do that anymore?
We quit producing annual reports in 2014. Nobody has asked for one since--
Oh.
--until you asked for one, and somebody about a month ago asked for one, they weren't getting read. And, uh, my assistant was consumed with them, the amount of work she had put into that, and I said, we got to move on to other things. Now, that's not to say that we can't begin to publish them, because we have all the data, we have all the pictures, it's all, we have physical and electronic copies of all of that, it's just compiling it was just sucking the life out of her. So that's where that, that went.
Okay.
If my boss directs me to put those out again, I will do that.
All right.
Not yet.
But all that information, um, you know, you keep the website current and keep, uh, things out so people can access information?
Well, one of the counselors asked for some data on, uh, police reports and, uh, crime in the neighborhoods, and I, I'm, somehow the link to crimereports.com got dropped from our website, so I had that added back. So that's almost real-time data on what's happening in your neighborhood and in the listeners' neighborhoods, so I refer you there for as good of information as you can get about crime in your neighborhood.
Oh, thank you, because I was looking for that link, and it's about that time, and, uh, so I'm glad that link's been restored.
Thank you. Anything else for the chief? How about for Nate?
You're so happy to answer.
I think we should say that we have, the Police Department, Community Development, and Public Works have been working with the In-N-Out folks to address the traffic and congestion problems that attend all of their openings, and so, um, we, and just, so everybody knows, we do not have a date. Um, they are moving forward, we were in the building last Thursday, they still have work to do in the building, they haven't even-- we don't have a date, so don't ask for a date, because they will not give a date. Um, and, but the concern, of course, is how to handle the expected crowds, and there's only so much stacking that can be possibly had onsite, and how we're going to make sure that the rest of the businesses are impacted as least as possible. And I must say that I was impressed with their commitment, the management's commitment on their part, to, uh, be responsible and to try to get this thing organized as well as possibly can be. Um, we will probably, you know, I can tell you, we will be coming to you at your next meeting with probably, um, a signage program to get directional signage, so that, uh, we give them as much, uh, help as we can, as well as the rest of our citizens, as much help as we possibly can. So, that'll be on your next agenda.
Mr. Johnson.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, I have nothing tonight, underwritten communications, agenda input, uh, we will meet at 7:00 PM on December second in regular session. December ninth, we have a 6:00 PM, we will have a work session on emergency preparedness, and on December sixteenth, we will meet 7:00 PM in regular session. Is there anything else for the good of the order? The time is 8:55 then, and we are adjourned. Thank you all.